This first meeting of the night is the School Board Meeting for Truth and Taxation. Wednesday, December 20th. It is now in session, and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are just on the first part of the meeting, so the changes to the agenda are in reference to the Truth and Taxation meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda for the Truth and Taxation meeting? All right, if we have no changes, we don't have to do a motion or anything, right? Okay. So now I'm going to look for a motion to approve the agenda for the Truth and Taxation meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the Truth and Taxation.
Thank you, and a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So the Truth and Taxation presentation will be done tonight by our business manager, Sharon Peterson. Do you need to say anything previous, Jen? Or just let her hop right in?
Let her go.
Let her go. All right.
Pretty exciting stuff here.
Okay. Redenning. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Welcome to the Truth and Taxation meeting, and many of you are probably more familiar with this presentation than I am. But this is the night that we have an opportunity for the public to come in and talk about the tax levy that will be proposed by to the board to make for approval. Actually, what's being approved is what will come into the district in two years. So it's always in motion and not current for property tax, but that is the way Minnesota does it, two years in advance, or two years in a year. I'll read it. And so tonight, the board first certified the proposed tax levy on September 19th, and that levy that was certified that night was at the maximum amount, and that has not really changed. And so the levy that you'll be seeing tonight is that same amount. And the figures that are used for the proposed tax notices are from then, are used by the auditors to send out your notices that we all received in the mail. And then we are required to have a Truth and Taxation hearing, and then the board needs to adopt the final levy by December 28th. So by doing so tonight, you'll be within that date. For the Truth and Taxation hearing, we must include discussion of the current budget, so we'll have a very brief overview of that. We must include discussion of the proposed levy, and so we'll have an overview of that. It must be held after 6 o'clock. We start at 6:02, check. And it can be held during a regular meeting. We're kind of doing meetings back-to-back, so we should be fine on that. And we must allow the public to provide input, so everybody's welcome for input on that. The information that is discussed during the Truth and Taxation hearing is mostly review for the school board, as we have discussed these items previously. But the law requires that we provide one more opportunity for the public to hear and understand these items before the board takes action to approve the final levy. So I will talk about the 2324 budget in a very broad terms, and it's based on budget documentation approved by the board in June of 2023. And for those who wish to learn more, I am happy to meet with you, and we also will probably do a little deeper dive into that proposed budget that we're doing the overview tonight. We'll do that hopefully in January, but definitely in March and April, there'll be a revision of that budget. Points to remember, the revenue limits and formulas are set by the state legislature, except for voter-approved referendums, and we do have a voter-approved referendum here in Leroy Osterender. Local levy and state aid mix are set by the state legislature. And an increase in local taxes does not necessarily mean an increase in revenues for the school districts, and vice versa. A decrease in taxes may not mean a decrease for the taxpayers. Again, the preliminary budget was adopted in June of 2023, and a formal budget update is planned for March or April of 2024. We'll be doing another review of the 2024 budget and make the necessary changes at that time, present it for approval. And now we'll go over a very broad overview. The 2324 expenditure budget is, it's actually 5.88% less than the actual expenses of the 2023 year that will be presented in the audit that will happen later in this meeting. And the majority of expenses, as you would expect, are spent in the general fund, which is 87%, and that's that big yellow portion there. And the rest of the funds are food service, or school nutrition, community service, scholarship, debt service, and they make up the remaining 13% of the expenses. So the general fund expenses are those 87% are primarily made up of instruction, general and special, and it seems we're in the business of educating, that's a good thing, administration, media center, transportation, maintenance, and then also those service areas of counseling and nurses. And also, I want to make sure to say that it also here includes the pool, and it also includes all of the active vehicles. What it doesn't include is the school nutrition, community education, long-term debt, principal and interest, and/or scholarships. So the general fund revenues are, sorry about that. They are budgeted at approximately 3.18 million for 2324, and of that amount, state aids is 64%, so the large blue section is 64% of state aid. The levy is 21%, and federal aids would be 8%, and local revenues approximately 7%. General fund expenditures can be distributed as follows, and you'll see there that, so all of the expenditures at this point, without revision, are approximately $4.76 million. And the majority of that expense is for education, so if you add the regular instruction, which is the blue section, special ed and vocational ed, those areas add up to $2.9 million, or 63% of our budget, and that is the education of our kids, for the most part. That is the largest dollar figure. The next category is support, and that is 11%, and that would be pupil support and instructional support. Those would be technology support, media center, and staff development would be included in those, and that would be approximately $574,000 this year. And also included in that is pupil support, which is counseling, health services, and Sites and buildings are 13%. That includes, that's about 629,000. Utilities, snow removal, general repairs, and then capital and LTFM funded projects. And then the last portion of the expenditure budget is administration, which makes up 13% in the 2324 preliminary budget, and that's approximately 632,000. And that includes school board, legal fees, superintendent's office, principal and clerical support, admin portion of technology, business office, liability insurance, workers' compensation, annual audit fees, and district membership. So we take care of a lot of things in those areas, in that 13%. So back to the levy. The total levy that we'll be asking the board to approve tonight is $1,222,131. Voter-approved portion of that, here in Leroy, is $610,080, and the other levies are $612,052. The voter-approved portion is actually declining this year by 60-plus thousand, and that's largely due to a loss of membership. So overall, there's a decrease of $38,382 for the levy, or a decrease of 3.05% as compared to the prior year's levy. And in that other portion that is not voter-approved, which is an operating referendum, basically, in the other section, it would be OPEB or debt service, community education, capital or deferred maintenance, the LTFM plan, a lease levy, and safe schools, and career So the levy changes. As I stated earlier, the total levy decreased in total by 3.04% or $38,382, and that is broken down by general fund, a decrease of 3.11% or $32,000-plus dollars. Community ed is a decrease of almost 8% or $10,000, and OPEB debt service is actually increasing 4%, which is almost $4,000. Here is what that levy looks like. You can see the largest portion of that is for the general fund, and smaller for community ed and debt service. So the next steps that we will have is any public input, and we'll follow that by the school board taking formal action in their meetings to certify the 2023 table's 2024 levy to meet the end of month deadline for the amount of $1,222,131.78. So at this time, we would ask for public input if we have any. Having hearing none, thank you for attending the Truth and Taxation.
Thank you. Really good.
Does anyone on the board have any questions regarding this Truth and Taxation presentation? Okay, so then I am looking for a motion to approve the Truth and Taxation as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the Truth and Taxation presentation to levy the amount of, it's full.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it. It is, that's good.
I have it right now, we're good.
Okay, very good. All right, a second for that?
Second.
Dave? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And at this time, we will adjourn this portion of the meeting. We will adjourn the Truth and Taxation meeting. I'm looking for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Truth and Taxation meeting is adjourned. All righty, moving right along. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting.
6:17.
Thank you, at 6:17 PM. And we are all here. There are a couple of changes to the agenda. One is that, where is that person? The Student Services Team Representative, Emily Brum, is unable, so B.
8B.
8B is canceled for tonight, and she will come another time. And then, under the consent agenda, under donations, there was a donation from TNT Electric, $250 for the LO Clay Target team. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the changes of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes of the agenda.
Thank you. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so then I'm moving to, now we get a chance to look at the full agenda today. And does anybody, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Who did we get on that?
Dave.
Dave, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, at this time, we are looking to see if there's any, did anybody ask for public input? No? Recognition and Good Things Happening, number six. Happy holidays to the staff, student, and all community members. We'd like to acknowledge the excellent winter concerts. Thank you to the students and the staff. We are very proud of you. Congratulations to Cam Hungerhold and Malik Schaefer for being named to All-State Football Team. All right. We are to number seven, the audit presentation. So, there you go.
Oh, Erin said you had donuts in there.
Oh, that was exciting looking box.
I'm Kaylee Lentz from Smith Schaefer. We met with Jen and Sharon earlier to go over the financial statements in greater detail. Tonight, I'm going to present a summarized version here with PowerPoint. So start with the audit, this screen's not running. Starting with the audit opinion, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the clean opinion, that's what we'd expect. It means we didn't have any issues with the audit. Minnesota Loop compliance, we tested various areas, like collateral health of the bank bits throughout the year, and the letters that we send all the board members to disclose to us if they have any conflicts of interest they may have, and we had no exceptions with that testing. Internal control letter, we have two comments, preparation of the financial statements, that just means that you're relying on Smith Schaefer to help you prepare those, and segregation of duties due to the fact of the limited number of staffing in the office, not something we expect to change, and it's a typical finding at our districts. Student activity compliance, there were no exceptions with those. Still not really showing the whole slide here, but. And then an audit committee letter, no comments, note there. Next slide. Average daily membership, or ADMs, this is what drives your district's funding. For several years, we were kind of hanging out at the 265 range with a decrease in 2022, but in 2023, we were able to increase by 13, bringing us now to 253. So with the increase in ADMs, we expect to see an increase in revenues, which we'll see on the next slide. Overall revenues at $5.8 million, up about $533,000 from the prior year. State aids are most significant aids in the gold here. General education aid did increase related to your increase in ADMs. The special ed revenue did decrease this year, which is why you're seeing kind of a slight decrease in your state aids. Property taxes increased from the prior year, and then your federal aids in light blue here, increased, we were able to spend more of our COVID funding in 2023, some supply chain issues, but didn't spend as much of it in 2022. The other category is basically anything that doesn't fit in the other three categories. With the food service program in 2022 being a federal program with free meals, that was showing up in the federal column, but in this year, the program changed, and those food sales, more of them are being recognized in the other column versus federal. Other things are investment income, donations, your community service fees, cardinal care, those things are in your other. The next slide, the revenues in a pie graph format, just showing that your most significant aid is coming in from the state and still are, but the mix changed slightly, a couple percentages in each of the categories from prior year to 2023. Property tax levy history, just to point out, your decline here in 2021 was related to the UNESCO $300,000 payable that we wrote off. It was a net zero effect to your bottom line, but we did have less revenue because they ran that through the LTFM levy, as well as decreasing expenses by the same amount, so it didn't affect your bottom line, but that's why this decrease in 2021 artificially. Now in 2023, we're back in line where we were in 2020, and then in 2024, the current year you're in now for school, the levy is increasing by about $243,000. Expenditures on the next slide did increase by about $322,000 from the prior year, so all the categories across the bottom, and then the 2023 numbers in the bright blue. So starting over here in administration, slight decrease related to salaries in administration, support services increased slightly, purchased Canon image runner, and then salaries were up some in support services. Regular instruction saw an increase. Student activities run through here as well, so we had a DC trip, an FFA convention that don't happen every year, as well as purchasing a tour board, and salaries did increase as well. Vocational didn't change much, stayed pretty flat, special ed can fluctuate year to year. Community ed increased slightly related to salaries. In the prior year or two, we had some offsetting revenues to, we had increased expenses related to preschool grants coming in to pay for some of those increased costs. And instructional support here, we purchased iPads, but we had offsetting revenue that came in for grant money to get those. And then in pupil support, this year, purchased a van, which was also offset with COVID funding money that came in as well. Sites and buildings, various different projects throughout, but this year, we had the LED project, a portion of it, next year we'll pay the rest of it, and a little less expenditures, but some of this stuff in the yellow there, the pool project, the gray, your boiler, land creatures, things like that. And then the last category, fiscal and other, that's your bond payments.
Just a quick question before you leave that slide. Why is something like scoreboards put under regular instruction and not under site, buildings, et cetera?
Um, do we need to, we would want to, could not there? It wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily have to be. It could have been, it could have been.
I think we talked about that.
Well, just, just a curious question, I just thought it seemed an odd place to have it.
You know, and it's too, it could have been the thought process because student activities are under there, because football, you know, it's, I think it's football. That's football, sorry. I think that's what it was, so, right, so it should make sense in that fashion, but you could, you could put it in sites and buildings if we wanted to, it's still.
Okay, part of student activities.
Yeah. The next slide then, your general fund activities. The general fund operated at a deficit of just under $300,000 this year. So revenues were up, so were expenses, so some of those that I mentioned, those iPads and the van, we had revenue coming in, but also those expenses, and then with the student activity, the FFA convention and the DC trip causing expenses to be higher this year than the previous year when those activities didn't occur, and the salary increase as well. So you can see the, on the next slide, the fund balance coming down by that $300,000. In the gold here, that's your restricted funds, and that did increase a little bit from the prior year because we were spending some of the COVID funds versus spending some of our operating capital, like restrictive reserves that we would have normally used instead. To point out, your general fund, your general fund balance is about 24% of your total current general fund expenditures, and your policy is to have three months of operating expenses and reserves, which equates to about 25% this year, so you're right in line there. So to just keep in mind, you keep planning and planning for those things to try and maintain that policy that you have with the three-month reserve. Food service fund operated at almost break-even, $348 server plus. The goal of food service fund is typically just to break even, but with the program changing every year for the last several years, and then again in 2024, it's kind of been all over the board, but you can see on the next slide that you do have a healthy fund balance reserve at $103,000. So if any capital needs that you have, after you kind of see how the program goes in fiscal 24, you do have those funds available to make a plan and kind of spend those.
Can I have a quick question? Are we, are we limited to how much we can have in there?
It's not a dollar amount set, but you would get a letter saying, hey, you got, you got to start making a plan to spend this down.
Okay.
Do you guys remember, we talked about that, last year, the SDGAM?
Yeah, and so I just wanted to see, that's where that's from, okay.
And ironically, the oven is not working, so you're probably ordering taro.
An oven, okay, very good.
Community services fund balance operated at a deficit of $23,000 this year. Revenue stayed about the same, but we did have increased expenses and salaries in the funds. On the next slide, you can see the fund balance coming down by that amount. Total fund balance at $137,000 at the beginning of the year. All of here, this is your ECFE, school readiness, preschool, cardinal care, those things, everyone operated at positive, besides community ed ran a slight negative this year.
And that was also due to that grant that we needed to increase expenses for?
Yes, yes, correct. And debt service fund activities on the next slide, when your OPEB, OPEB refunding bonds came off, that's why it's down lower here, but your revenue coming in from your debt service levy and state aids coming in to pay down your bond payments, making your principal and interest payments. The next slide, fund balance continues to come down, it's at about $13,000, and those bonds are going to be paid off in 2027. Scholarship fund on the next slide, this is money available to award students scholarships. $75,000 was paid out in scholarships in fiscal 2023 this year, and the balance is at about $461,000, so you have quite an impressive scholarship fund here for, available for students at this district. The next few slides are comparison charts. The blue and the yellow, they're 2022 numbers, because that's the most recent information available to us, so the blue is districts of comparable size, which the range is pretty broad, 0 to 499. So with being 253, it could be kind of a big difference comparing to somebody that's 499, but that's the range that they give, and then the yellow is the state average. So district and support, expenses did increase some, but your ADMs increased, so they're able to spread those costs across more students, so it's kind of stayed pretty similar to last year. However, you still need a certain amount of administration and support regardless of how many students you have just to operate the district, so, you know, depending on how many students you can bring in, to spread it across more would bring that down. The next slide, regular instruction. Spent about $2.5 million, created $2.2 million, so again, in regular instruction, student activities run through here, so, you know, this district, Ped DC and FFA, but other districts have trips one year and not the next, so it kind of skews those comparisons too, because it's not an every-year thing, some have every other year trips. So it is, it is hard to compare, but this would be where you want to spend your money, shows you're spending it on students and the teachers in regular instruction. But again, those, those things don't happen every year, can cause expenses to go as well. The next slide is your general fund cost, just your general fund. Stayed pretty similar to last year. Expenses were up, but also your ADMs were up, and when you're just comparing enough expenditures, it's not taking into consideration the fact that you had COVID money coming in to offset those expenses, it's just showing your increased expenses. You had money that covered the van expenses, but your expenses are here, not your revenues. Same with the iPad, so, so it is higher, but you had some more of those kind of projects, your LED scoreboards, things like that, so. And then just to summarize, general fund operated at a deficit of just under $300,000, ended with $1.2 million in fund balance, so that fund balance is 24% of your current general fund expenditures, right in line with your, your policy that you have. Food service operated a small surplus of $348,000. Community service operated at a deficit of $23,000 and ended Community service operated at a deficit of $23,000 and ended with $137,000. And your OPEB debt service fund ended with $13,000 at the end of the year. Does anybody have any questions?
We just had a building and grounds meeting tonight, and so where does LTFM get accounted in this whole thing?
Revenue.
Yeah, revenue and expenditures. So is that in the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in your general fund. Most of those, you saw their restricted fund balance, so it's outside of the unassigned fund balance, although your policy encompasses all fund balance, taking into consideration your restrictions and unassigned. And most of the LTFM is a sites and building expense.
So it would get put under that on that graph we talked about earlier?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, so wonderful presentation, and now we need to have a motion to approve the ISD 499 audit 2022-2023. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move we approve the audit.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, so we have our student representative here with us tonight, and we'll take her report now.
So we've done both Christmas concerts, and those went well. And NHS went around and decorated all the elementary classrooms and left like little tree bags for all the kids during the elementary concert. And we've been doing the 12 Days of Christmas, like activities and dress-up days for a while, and then tomorrow we start break.
All right, thank you. That was a really cute idea to decorate while the kids were at the concert, and they were just tickled. So, okay, thank you. Where did these little treats come from? A little elf cane, a little elf cane.
Remember, you can't have a gift over $5, hence why. It's like, it's $4.90. It's under $5, so if you think you're getting more, day in, day out, think again.
You cannot take two of these.
Yeah, you can't take two. That's right, Deb.
Okay, and then Emily will come and speak to us a different time, so not B, then let's C, let's go to Erin for preschools report.
I didn't have anything for you guys, but I did have one thing pop up yesterday. I've talked about partnering with colleges and student teaching and how do we get people down here. So yesterday, I had a conversation with Concordia St. Paul. They're interested in partnering with us, with the student teachers. They invited me to their next principal panel, they call it, where three weeks before students graduate, they meet, they bring a principal panel there, and then you get to meet them and kind of sell your school and things like that. So excited to start that partnership. I've reached out to several others, but that's the recent one that actually is committed. One of the things, and I think I brought this up a couple of months ago when talking about getting student teachers down here, one of the obstacles is housing. We had that conversation with them. She said, you really need to start thinking outside the box of how you can entice students to come here, because, you know, they can live at home and not have that extra pay. You know, a lot of times they make that recommendation if they can stay at home and then, you know, work at a school near where they live. She said, if you could come up with some way to either have housing that's inexpensive or like homes that would take.
Like host?
Yeah, take students in. She goes, that way you'd be, you'd have a better chance of getting kids down there if they don't have to pay for living expenses and stuff like that. So I think that's something that we really need to start having a conversation. I don't know how to go about that if you, if I put an advertisement in the paper, or we do something at City Council with the city, or something like that. So just for some of you guys to think about, because that's something I'll need help on of how do we go about recruiting people to offer their house for things like that. So, but yeah, they were pretty excited to partner with us, because they kind of, their main focus is obviously in the cities area, but they would love to branch out. So, but she said that was kind of what the obstacle we talked about would be the housing. So something we need to maybe focus on is the school district of how could we attract student teachers down here and hopefully take care of some of the, maybe the housing issues, so something to think about. So that was really the, kind of the good news things that I've been kind of working on. This popped up yesterday, really good meeting. So other than that, nearly not a lot for December, wrapping things up, getting to the break, and we'll pick her up again in January, let's see what else is going on.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Sure. First of all, happy holidays, everybody. If I don't say that later tonight. Kind of to piggyback off what Mr. Hungerholt saying, for the past few years, Erin has done a really nice job of creating some partners in education. He failed tonight to mention what he has done, and some of those things include the RCTC stuff, where there's college credits involved, online college in the high schools, KLEP testing, North Dakota Center for Distance Learning, the ALC at our SMEC center for any kind of high school credit recovery that's needed, the WSU, SDSU, and Grand Canyon University field experience, so student teaching type stuff. So he continues to branch out, and we know that's part of our strategic plan, but we also know it's really, really great for kids. It's great for our teachers, but it's also great for our community at large. So we'll continue, I'll pressure him more to talk to you more about it, but I mean, he needs to talk about that, like he's done a really nice job. Also, what he did last year, may recall too, we talked about this, we partner with SMEC in terms of the career fair. They're looking at early May. We'll give you a more solid, solidified date on that, but we'll have kids go to that too. We'll also continue to send kids to our RCTC career fair and continue to do that as well. Erin and I are almost complete with the civil rights data collection. That's a federal document that each year we have to submit. By law, we have to submit, or we could get in pretty big trouble for that. So we are almost done. I hope to submit before it's due, the end of February. I usually like to get it done mid-January. Once that happens, you'll probably get an email with a lot of explanation points that it's done, because it's kind of a nightmare, isn't it? It's terrible. Anyway, quick thing for Becky Morrow, our social worker. She's always does a great job in terms of sending out communications related to families in need. Continue to please donate if you can, continue to please donate to our local food shelves as well. We do have families in need in this district and every district across Minnesota, so plug for that. Nurse Brahm is planning on having a children's dental clinic on Wednesday, January 24th. We will be marketing that and advertising that as well. Sarah Otto is our January staff to spotlight, so look for her. I believe I already sent it to you, but it'll be on Facebook too. Sharon mentioned this earlier, and I've mentioned it a couple of times. Now, we're going to start early again with the process of budgeting, so you're going to be hearing about it more and more, starting January, whether it's here at public meetings or of course in your emails. Our teaching staff will hear about it as well, but again, I like to start it early so that if we have to tweak some things, we have plenty of time to do that before the end of June. A friendly reminder to our community, as well as our staff and school board, we do have a new AED, which is now housed right next to the back entrance door of the office. So with any emergency, please use that. The principals group has not yet come to the superintendent's group for the consortium, but they're working on the 24-25 school district calendar. Once that comes, it will be probably approved again in March, February, March, around that time, so they'll be doing that too. Tonight also, if I could, oh, you guys saw this already, I sent it to you, and the staff has seen it too. January 23rd, the Austin Bruins are coming again, so Corey Ronenberg has done a nice job with that as well. This is awesome, you probably heard about this too. Kathy Dudley, one of our math teachers, is doing after-school help for math. So so proud of her for that, so thank you for that. We did do, through our, actually local Mauer County Consortium collaborative effort, we handed out laptops, free laptops and desktops to, was it eight families? Becky submitted names to, and they were approved, so that's what they got free of charge through this consortium effort. So that's a big deal. I think Leroy submitted the most and worked the hardest, so we got those for the kids. I've been working hard with our Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development in terms of creating more of a broadband effort here in the Leroy-Ostrenor area, again, knowing that we have some pretty significant needs in terms of financial needs of our families. This is a great effort, working with congressional leaders to get some broadband around here, get that going. So I've sent off some letters that we, as a district, support that and really want to support our families, and I'll keep you, of course, posted on that. Then in front of you, I won't read through all this, but Mr. Carrier, he wasn't able to attend tonight, but he wanted to present, but he thought, oh, I'll just hand this out. But this is one of his annual reports that he wants to give all of you. So he has activities on the first page and on the next couple pages. He did a really nice job in terms of showing you graphs, visual graphs, of how well we're doing in terms of academics. So that speaks volumes for what's going on in the classroom, and the implemented, I guess, services we're providing to our kids, and recognizing kids early, looking at data, having discussions with kids, having discussions with parents. This is a big deal, folks, especially this graph, the number of Fs per quarter, you're going to be shocked by this. And I've emailed you a couple of times, but now the full data is in this report. If you have any questions about this data, you can contact myself, Mr. Hungerholt, or Trevor as well. So and he'll, don't worry, he will be, you know, presenting to you at some point this school year, but just could not make it tonight. But here's his report for you. Other than that, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. E, we're going to do our school board committee reports and comments. And community education, I was just going to say that we have our new ECFE coordinator who has started, Liz Loken, and her and Kate Rohr put together, Liz's first time of doing Breakfast with Santa. Thirty-something years it's been here in Leroy, but she was, did a fantastic job. It was really organized, there was like 288 people attended, plus all the workers. So it was a really big fun event. And also, just wanted to mention that the Leroy-Ostrenor community education does have a Facebook page, and there's posting on it very frequently. So if there's anything you're interested in, it's kept up to date. All right. Meet and confer, I was unable to attend. Angie, were you able to?
Yep, we didn't really have, there were no big items to discuss.
Okay, okay. And did you set up anything for the future, or just wait till, wait and see what, after we set up those committees for the new year, we'll get something going? MSBA?
Not much this month. They had a coffee conversation yesterday, but I didn't check that out.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks. State High School League, anything? Nope. Scholarships, I'm thinking nothing at this point. Certified and non-certified, we'll be discussing later. SMEC?
Nothing new.
Okay. World's Best Workforce, anything new on that?
Oh, yeah, we sent it into MDE, I'm sorry. We did, after we had our meeting, we sent it into MDE, it's been approved, and it's posted.
And Dylan has updated, we have all the updated.
Active links are ready.
Great. Where is that found? On our regular website?
Website, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Buildings and grounds, met tonight?
We met tonight. Most of the discussion revolved around the small gym floor. We got three quotes. Got to do some research on one of them, and we're probably going to make a decision in January, what we'll recommend to the board for approval in February. So we can get going on that project this summer.
So you'll meet, you'll meet as Buildings and Grounds in January, bring something to us maybe in February?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Buildings and Grounds? Okay, and then I attended the Mauer County Collaborative Meeting yesterday. We spent some time discussing their budget and did their budget review, and then the preparation for the 2024 budget. We had a lot of good discussions, and we're trying to make sure that the services that they offer are being spread out throughout the county. And there is going to be a survey that's coming from this group, from the chair and the committee on the Mauer County Collaborative, and it's going to come to the principal, the superintendent, the, I'll get it as a school board member, and our Becky Morrow, our social worker. So they're just really encouraging us to get those surveys filled in so that we can say, how are you utilizing this and make sure that we're using, this is grant money that comes to the county for this collaborative, and it's got guidelines as to how it can be used, but we're trying to make sure that it's getting spread throughout the county and getting the best use possible. So it was a very good meeting, and we'll meet again in March. Okay. All right, so now let's take a look at the consent agenda. So did everybody get a chance to look at all the financial reports? Sharon, I had a quick question on this paper here. Okay, do you want to look at it? I was just, did you guys all get a chance to see this? We got an updated one. Like, can you explain to me, just a question, not a criticism, just an asking, in the checking account, like, why it would be in the negative? We don't put the money in there till we need it, or?
So the outstanding checks, you know, make that negative, but you're right, they do an automatic transfer when the balance goes below a certain amount.
Okay.
So if those checks are left outstanding and not cashed, then they're still that positive amount sitting in the, that's why there's a positive of $6,426 that's actually on the statement.
Okay.
But that as things clear, they do transfers from your investment savings account and sweep it in there.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly.
Yeah.
So as those, those are outstanding bills, as they start coming through, then they get put in?
Yeah, so they sweep it.
Right.
And then they send us notices, and then it's also on the statement, so we receive a paper notice as they happen.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting.
Saves us the most money and creates the most interest when you do it that way.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Did anybody else have any other questions regarding anything in the financials? Nope?
That was the one.
Okay, and you got that? Okay, all right. Then also, on the consent agenda, were the two fundraisers from the DC group, and making note, thank you for the donation to TNT Electric, to the LO Clay Target Team, $250. And under personnel, we are looking to approval of the job description for the Washington DC Club Advisor. We had that.
Yep. Quickly, can I mention, in the initial post of this, there was a couple spelling errors that were caught then later. So the handout to you will be the official, with the spelling errors corrected, and those will go in our HR binder, the corrected.
All right, fantastic. Okay, and then B, under personnel, the approval of hiring Cassidy Stomas to replace Brittany Wa as paraprofessional starting January 2nd. And then, okay, that is our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda, motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So then... Okay. So then, go, we're down at number 10. Um, we, the policy committee does not meet in December, so there's no policy review. That will happen in January again. And then approval of the combined polling place designation of Leroy-Ostrander High School? I don't know what that means.
So every year, um, during elections, there's new law that you have to determine your polling place.
Oh, sure, okay.
On those off-election years.
Okay.
So like, we just had one.
Right.
Um, and so now we have to approve this every year. So lucky you, you get to see this every year.
Okay.
But we have to do it by a rule call to approve this. And then, um, I will send the minutes once approved in January.
Okay.
To a man in, um, Mauer County to let her know we did approve.
Okay, okay. So what we're just going to do now is we're going to approve that, um, if we need to have a combined polling place, that the designation of that location is Leroy High School when there are no other elections being held.
Yes.
Like the one we just had.
You're right.
Okay, so, um, looking for approval, um, Pat?
Yes.
Dave Farlinger?
Yes.
Dave Lunning?
Yep.
Amanda?
Yep.
Angie?
Yep.
Tab and Kyle?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and then, um, number 11 is just the last little bit of our calendar events. Tomorrow, December 21st, there'll be an early release right around noon. And December 25th through the 1st is our winter break. And January 28th, um, which is the first Monday after the New Year's, is our reorganizational school board meeting. So I'm in.
Can we change that? There's a girls' game that night.
Okay.
It, it doesn't have to be Monday. I checked. It says Monday or as soon after, as it can be.
Okay.
It just can't be before.
Correct. Can't be before the first Monday?
Right.
Okay.
So there's games Mondays, Monday and Tuesday. I mean, I could do it Monday, but I'm guessing not everybody wants to come in at like three or four o'clock. So if we could just change the, it might be easier.
Okay.
What about the Wednesday?
That's what I'm thinking is Wednesday, but.
Does that run a conflict for?
The 10th.
The 10th, Wednesday, the 10th. Does that run in conflict for anybody? All right. Do we need to make a motion for that, or just?
Um, let's do that.
Okay.
Let's, just to be safe, we don't necessarily have to, because we'll be reposting.
Yeah.
The date, but.
Um, make a motion to have our school, our January school board meeting on Wednesday, January 10th.
I'll make that motion since I requested it.
All right, and second?
I'll second.
Okay, Amanda. And all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right. So that will be Wednesday, January the 10th. Okay, at our regular six o'clock time. Motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Time?
6:55.
Thank you. 6:55. All right.